One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beisler? Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Vla? Here. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polatowski? Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here. Just for the record, Mr. Polatowski called to say he's not able to get out of work soon enough to get to a meeting, so he probably wouldn't be here, but possibly maybe, probably not here.
Citizen comments?
Oh, thank you. Yes, um, when I was at the football game two weeks ago and again last week, I just wanted a burst with pride when I saw that the players were wearing pink accessories in honor of awareness for breast cancer. And I want to commend all the people who made that possible. I'm sure it took some coordination, it took some extra equipment. It was just a beautiful and mature thing for our kids to do. It was our team that had it on. And yes, those kids don't get that disease at that point in time, but their lives are very likely going to be touched by that as they grow older. And I just wanted to compliment the team and the people who made that possible, and thank them for making us look so good on that field for those football games. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Minutes?
At the voting meeting, we'll be asked to approve the minutes from the October 4th and October 11th board meetings.
Questions? My dear?
At the voting meeting, we'll ask to be, uh, to approve the treasures report and the bills payable. We do not have those reports today because it's the first of the month, and they have not arrived yet from the bank.
Property tax?
Property tax exoneration. Um, we received a letter from a disabled veteran requesting a property tax exemption. Um, and this is similar to, um, exonerations we've done in the past, and, uh, we would recommend that, uh, that we grant that exoneration. We've turned assessment, it is $22,840, $149 acres.
My dear, some survey?
Um, we spoke to you last week about the financial survey that the Commonwealth asked us to do as part of their early warning system for school districts who may be in financial distress. There is a copy of that in front of me today. This sheet has a green column going down the right-hand side, pretty straightforward. It asks, uh, this is as of the end of fiscal year 11-12. It's asking for some information about community assigned, unassigned fund balances. Um, so our community fund balance is 1.38 million. Our assigned fund balance is 2.75 million.
Dr. Waller, did you just hand that out tonight?
Yeah, it just came out tonight.
Okay, now, like, maybe just, just one minute here, and let's get our fingers here on it.
Looks like this.
It looks like this.
Okay.
There it is, you got it.
So anyway, these are our fund balance figures. Um, our revenue for the fiscal year 11-12, um, our expenditures for fiscal year 11-12, um, then it goes into some 12-13 data. Um, again, we've committed fund balances, assigned, unassigned, what our budgeted expenditures, debt service payments, et cetera, would be. And then, uh, talks about collected taxes, total assessed values. And then at the bottom, it asks you some questions that are trigger questions. Have we ever had to withhold vendor payments due to cash flow issues? Do we anticipate cash flow issues during 12-13? Do we anticipate requesting an advance of basic education funding during 12-13? Are we going to have difficulty meeting our payroll? As a trend, tax revenue anticipation, no condition to the school district. And when any teacher contracts expire before June 30th, 2013, the answer to all of those is no. Um, we have received a bond rating, A1, and that rating came on June 28th. So that was the information that state was asking for as part of their early warning system, and that was the information that Mr. Salem and Rose able to put together this event.
Jack, I have a question. When you look at total revenue for 11-12, it's $24,208. Total expenses for the same year were $26,200. And I look at that as a negative of $2,074,531. Is that correct?
That, that's how the math works, yes.
So that means we spent $2 million more than we had that year.
This is 12-13?
No, 11-12. I'm, I'm looking at, um, school year 11-12. You go down the column, and the, next to the last number is 24, and it says revenue, right? That means what you took in.
Right.
Expenditures, 26, too. And I'm, I subtracted it, and the difference is $2,074,531, which means we spent $2 million more than we took in. Is that correct?
That's, that's what he has written here. He does not have the annual financial report completed yet, so I don't have the details on, on that. But that's what it looked here.
Jack, that's serious.
Understood.
That's very serious.
Does he?
I want to point, Doc, and a lot of that may have come out of the fund balance we'd set aside for construction. So that would not be recurring revenue or would be a recurring expense.
You'd have thought he'd have listed that as expenditures, though, Jack. Wouldn't you think? I would.
Well, it is an expenditure.
Yeah, and it's not listed as one, is what I'm saying. I mean, I understand what you're saying. That can make up the difference, but I would think he'd have put it in there. That's a biggie.
But it is the word. He didn't make, he didn't make these columns up.
No, but total expenditures, total expenditures. And we spent that money last year. I know we did, on the board.
So, so that's where the difference lies. Those weren't operating revenues. Those were, those were monies that were spent from committed, from, from fund balance that was committed for the construction project.
Okay.
You understand? Can I thank Mr. Paton?
And I think what would be helpful, though, would be to have, I mean, to have a breakdown, and I'm sure it'll come here eventually, on, on what, what came out of, uh, what was in capital expenditures. Uh, check, check. Somehow, the $2 million does seem high on that. And then what was allocated to it from, from our, our funds?
When Mr. Salem's annual financial report completed, one of the things I want him to do is to go over that in great detail with the board, so we know exactly what was spent for what.
So, Jack, do you think the first three numbers in are what came out of the fund balance? The $1,000,000, $2,000,000, $7,000,000, and $1,008,000? Do you think those come out of the fund balance then? Committed, assigned, and unassigned?
That's what the fund balance was at the end of 11-12.
Where, Jack?
The committed fund balance at the end of 2011-12 was $1,389,000.
Right. And the, so that means that money was committed.
That's, that's money in the bank.
And then assigned is also money that's committed, because it's assigned to something, right? And that might be that construction.
The, well, and again, that's, that's assigned, but it's, it's money in the bank, that is in the bank at the end of the year. It's not spent.
Is that all we have?
So, so the committed fund balance, I believe, was money that you folks committed toward early retirement services and of that nature.
Right.
The business manager has the perm to assign fund balance.
Okay.
So he may have this assigned for early retirement. He may have it assigned for capital, future capital expenditures. And then the unassigned fund balance, which is limited by statute to a certain percentage of our budget, is 1.8 million.
The unassigned fund balance can be up to 8 percent? Is it 8 percent?
I believe so.
Of our total budget? 8 percent of our total budget is like... We've had $9 million in there before. I'm just not smart enough to understand this chart, and maybe we just need more information.
And again, this chart was, was just answering questions that the state asked us. Okay. So, next week, Bill will be here, and he can certainly go into detail with you about where he got his numbers.
Jack, it says, "Provide the most current fund balance data for 12-13." Is that those first three numbers there? They'd be like 3, 4 million? Is that what it is?
Which first three numbers?
Well, in the, in the second set of green blocks, then. It says 12-13. Committed, it says, "Provide the most current fund balance data available for 12-13." Okay, so I'm assuming that those first three numbers...
That's what we're predicting, the fund balance to be at the end of 12-13.
So it'll be like four, four, 3 million, maybe 4 million?
About 4.5, something like that. Which is pretty much the figure we talked about in budget time, right?
Did we get a copy of that form that you submit to the government on October 30th? Is that...
That's the annual financial report.
Do we have that?
We do not have that yet.
Did you submit it, though?
No, it's not submitted yet. Actually...
Are you late?
It's due November 30th.
Oh, I thought it was October 30th. I'm sorry. November 30th. Well, we'll get that, then.
And, and there will be a presentation by the business manager that gives you the great detail about that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? 2013 40 budget?
Cam, you folks had asked for a broad, broad forecast of where we're going to be for next year. Um, Mr. Salem emailed this to me the evening before he went into the hospital, so I was not able to ask him a lot of questions about where he got his figures. So again, I'm willing to hand this out, and he is planning to go into detail on, on this 41-30. But right now, preliminarily, he is looking at revenues of $25,125, and that's assuming that all revenues are the same as they are this year. Obviously, we don't know if, you know, local real estate revenue will go up or down, other local revenue may go up, may go down. So we're basing that preliminarily on what last year's numbers were. Looking at expenditures, again, he just tried to extrapolate some very broad numbers and come up with expenditures, and he came up with about $26.8 million in expenditures, leaving us at this point here on November 1st, a $1.7 million shortfall. Again, this is November 1st. We have done, you know, we have booked that areas where, where some reductions can be made. Nor do we have any firm figures at all on where the revenues will be. So that's, that's where we are at a very early state. And again, Bill will be here next week to discuss that with greater detail.
Hey. May I speak, Mike? I had requested that Mike allow me to speak at this point under District Finance, because this is a planning meeting, and I desperately want to talk about planning. I have a handout here that I would like to share with you. When I asked for fiscal information for long-term planning, the board voted it down. They did not want Mr. Salem to do a long-term plan. And that's fine. It's, what do you call that? Levi, the wisdom of the majority, and that's fine. Because I feel that I have a responsibility regarding the fiscal stability of this school district, I, I did it myself. And I did a five-year plan, a five-year projection, I want to say a five-year projection. And basically, this is what's going to happen if something drastic isn't done. So the first thing I wanted to tell you is that my sources for my information were the PSBA Conference, the School Leader News, that's the book you all get all the time, the Tribune Review, and the IU 7 Business Manager. And what I did, took me nine hours, page by page, line by line, review of this budget, this budget. This is the budget we have. And I only listed three items: salaries, medical and dental, and PSCRS. I calculated those costs. I looked over a five-year period, again, assuming no changes, because this board has voted they're not going to change anything at this point in time. And my projection is based on salary increases of 2.5 percent a year, which is very conservative, healthcare increases of 10 percent per year. I, Mark, put this article in that they're increasing 10 percent. I went to the workshop in Harrisburg, or Hershey, and they said, "You calculate a 10 percent increase in healthcare every year, Obamacare or not, you calculate that." When I went to the IU meeting, the business manager there said, "No matter what you do, when you prepare a budget, you consider 10 percent per year." So that's what I did. And then I looked at PSCRS payments, but what I used for that is the chart that you see there. And you see in 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16, the employer rate goes from 12.36 to 16.75 to 21.25 to 25.56 to 26.26 to 26.8. They kind of level out in, in five years at the, well, four years, four years to 16, 17. So, I used, that's the information it's based on. If you tell me my numbers are wrong, then this is wrong. I looked at the teacher's salary increases, which were $991,000. I didn't even take into account the additional social security we're going to pay, but I did look at PSCRS. I was at a, a political function, and I talked to Levi Ivanikovich, who's in Harrisburg, and I said, "Levi," I'm sorry, Eli, Eli Ivanikovich, Eli. I said, "Eli," I said, "You guys said you were really doing this big thing with the tax increases with Act 1, you know. You said you took all this stuff away. You left us the three big ones, which are pensions and healthcare, and I think it's construction or something." And this is what Eli Ivanikovich told me, and I don't know if it's right or wrong. "If you want to increase the tax revenue, the taxes that you put on the people, you cannot use PISRS increases on anything given after 2010." That's what he told me. We settled our contracts years after that. I looked at healthcare increases. I also assumed that even though we lose students, we're still going to get the same amount of money. I'm going to assume no one is laid off or furloughed, no, no buildings are closed. We probably have minimal retirements, but even so, will they be replaced. And I'm assuming that everything we're paying today will be the same in five years. Big question is this, and this, you'll see this in my calculations. When we were talking, Mr. Salem said that the state pays 50 percent of our pension costs. Is that right? So that leaves 50 percent. Jack, do we pay that 50 percent, or do we get 64 cents on every dollar of that 50 percent?
I don't know the answer.
See, that's a big item. We get 64 cents of every dollar that we spend here from the state. So if we get 50 percent of our pension paid, lock that off. Now we have 50 more. Do we get 64 cents on every dollar of that? And I don't know the answer to that question, and no one I talked to did, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Bill, and that's okay. But anyhow, we look at the fund balance, what happens to it each year, and I also included Mr. Salem's scenarios that were, that he presented. I spent nine hours on this, and when I hit the final button on the calculator, I pushed my chair back, and I said, "O M G, my findings were identical, identical to Mr. Salem's. We will be bankrupt in three to four years." On the next couple of pages there, and this is, this is my, this is my rough, I'm showing you how I sat and did all this on the calculator. This is my private raw data. It's called raw data. And basically, I added up the salaries. I took health and dental costs. And then you'll see two columns for PISRS. One is if we pay, one is calculated at 100 percent, and then one is calculated at 50 percent, because I don't know the answer to how much we pay. But if you look at, I, then you add up the salaries, health and dental, and 100 percent for a year, and then salaries, health and dental, and 50 percent. So they're actually two different things. And I go through, up through 17, 18. Um, now, if we continue as we are, by the year 2017, which is five years from now, we will have to raise taxes 56 mils to pay for it. If we only have to pay, if we get 64 cents on every dollar of our 50 percent of the pension, okay, you go down to 21 mils, and the same thing with a 50 percent increase. So the answer to that question is critical. If we get a straight 50 percent, you're going to pay 56 mils. If we get 64 percent of that 50 percent, it knocks it way down. PSCRS is huge. It's huge. I looked at the budgets, and according to the increases that we have, and I don't even know how much federal money. There's a lot to talk about the fiscal cliff. I attended a workshop at Hershey on the fiscal cliff, and what that would mean for education, and it would basically wipe out our federal money. And, and again, that's, that's another issue that deals with that. There's no child left behind, stuff like that. We'll talk about that later. But anyhow, I, as I see the increases, our budget by 2017 will be $31,290. We'll get 20 million of it, and we'll need 11 million from our people, which means that's where you have to get the extra taxes. When you average out the five-year increase just for these three categories, nothing else, it's $355,200 every year, and it's going to go up. Um, when he presented his first three scenarios, I just, the board dismissed them because they thought it was too drastic. But after nine hours, page by page, my conclusion was the same as his. "We are facing huge cost increases in three major areas: pension contributions, healthcare, and salary increases. If nothing is done about the way our school district is run, restructuring does not occur, we will be near or at bankruptcy within three to four years. Along with that, there will be a need for huge tax increases, only if we're allowed to do that by law, because you can't just do anything under Act 1, and our fund balance is evaporating. The one thing I hoped is that the school board was aware. The procedure to close a school takes up to one year. You have to have public hearings. I think there's three of them. You have to go to the Department of Education to get approval. As it stands now, we can't even close a building for next year. It's too late, I think. It's too late. It's too late. We tried earlier. Um, I think that the action to close the primary administration buildings are urgent. We need to realign our resources, do a zero-based budget, a zero-based budget, and streamline staffing patterns. And I don't want my name associated with economic downfall of the school district, and that's why I did all this work. So I offered this to the board. You can read it. You can throw it in the garbage. I don't care what you do with it. I, I did the five-year projection of what I think is going to happen. It's very much in line. When you're looking at the 2013-14, right there, the shortfall is $1,729,274. Right there, there it is. I mean, it's, his salary increases, pension increases, healthcare increases, and so forth. It's, his is the same as mine. So I think, as a board, we are responsible for this, and I think that I'm going to make a motion at the next meeting that we take some action to start planning for these things. I don't know how you want to do it, or what. I welcome your suggestions. I'm asking you now.
Well, I was, I think this is helpful, and is, is similar to what we, we saw earlier, as, as Dr. Feig here pointed out. Um, one of the things that I, both on the, on the expenditure side and, and on the, on the revenue side, um, while we have made decisions I, along the way here, I, I don't, I don't thi, I haven't thought that we have made unilateral decisions that we, we'll not, uh, look at steps to bring our expenditures in line with revenue. Uh, and in the, during the, during the month of January, February, March, I, I think, I mean, obviously, the kind of broad strokes here, there's a big gap here, and we worked on it last year. And I, and so I would, I'm not maybe quite as pessimistic, although I think, I think it's, it's going to be a tough one. On the revenue side from the state, and I just raised this, and this is, I mean, you know, one hunch is as good, and you were over at Hershey, we all, a number of us were. Um, the governor came in and, and did flat funding for the first two years here. Um, education, however, and I think that's been a, I'm not sure, and I don't look at it as all bad. I mean, I, I know a lot of the public school people feel, and I, maybe we all, we should, that this is, that he's anti-education. I don't look at that. I think he's trying to build some fiscal restraint into the system. Having said that, I think in the Commonwealth, education, on any polls, education comes up very high in expenditures, that the voters, voters believe in, and will vote. The governor is going to be up for reelection here in two years. I, I, my hunch is there's going to be some, a little more response there on revenue toward public education in the next two years. I may, I may be totally wrong. I've said that before here, I think, and I may be totally wrong on that. But so, that would be, if that would translate into a few hundred thousand more, that, that would be, I, I don't, I am not quite as pessimistic on that, but just a few thoughts here.
See, I'm not being pessimistic, you may. I'm looking long range. This is the difference. We'll get through this year, okay? We'll get through next year. That isn't when the problem happens. We really hit rock bottom, and I guess I'm a long, I see long range. I think we owe it to this district to, to make sure that it doesn't, I don't want any board that comes after us to have to face that because we made bad decisions. I just think that we are, I think the people elected us to solve this issue. And again, I'm asking the board, if you can show me some other way, or please, please, show us some other, show me something else that says, "We don't have to worry about this, or we don't have to do this." I, I've asked repeatedly. I don't know what else to do. Mr. Alt and I gave our suggestions, our recommendations.
Levi, no, again, because I don't think either one of us know whether we're going to get more money or not, but one of the interesting things that I heard the other day, and I had to make some phone calls to a legislator's office, is that for the first time in 25 or 30 years, the Department of Corrections does not get an increase. And, and the population is, is blowing out the doors. I mean, so if they're not going to get any money, and they've always set aside money for the prison system, things are tight. Things are tight. I, you know, I, I hope you're right.
I do, too.
I just see things changing in a different way, and everybody's tightening their belt, and we got to do it, too. Oh, on, I'm not that funny subject, but that, who left this article?
I did.
Oh, okay. I thought it was somebody's wishes.
No, I didn't know if you knew about that, Ken.
It's that prison guard suicide rate goes up, and I thought maybe someone retired or somebody's home.
That's unrelated to the board meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if you saw it or not.
Any more discussion? Paul, did CWCTC?
Yeah, um, there was some discussion last month. Folks from CWCTC were here. Um, the plan is that they would like each board to vote on a resolution whether or not to support the proposed repairs to the building in January. That was put off. They had originally talked about us doing it this month. They had to enter into some negotiations with Frasier, Mr. Frasier. His law belongs to our Career Technology Center. However, they send a lot of students to our Career Technology Center, so we're trying to look for ways So we're trying to look for ways to allow Frazier to help to share in the, in the cost of the renovations from which their students will benefit. And they're in the process of working out a memorandum of understanding with Frazier at this point in time. So I just put that on the agenda in case there were some other discussions that you folks wanted to have on that proposal while we have the time to do it.
Jack, I had a question, I think maybe Mr. Patonic can answer this, because it may be a legal thing. But if Frazier could send their kids on a tuition basis, why can't we?
Because we are, we have equity in the, we are a member of the consortium.
Can we get out of it?
Bylaws.
I thought it might be a legal issue, but I got to thinking about that, you know? We could send our kids to that technical school in Greensburg, I forget the name of it. We could pay tuition, send our kids anywhere, but are we locked in because we're part of something we can't get away from? Is that what it is?
I haven't looked at that for a long time.
That's probably true.
I know there are bylaws and there was an initial agreement of bylaws. I'm not sure how much advance notice you have to give and that sort of thing. I don't have a perfect recall on that.
Yeah, I don't either, but.
I would suspect going back to when that building was built, the Southwood School District contributed a substantial amount of money to build the building. We were part of that building directly.
You don't think the state built that building or the feds? We get all that Perkins money, Jack, they get huge, back, back then, I don't know about now, but back then, I can remember them getting literally millions of dollars of Perkins money because they had to follow the Perkins law. So it was a funded mandate, they got huge amounts of money. And, I don't know, it was just a thought. I think we probably can't do it, but I take this commitment very seriously and I understand we do have students attending there. I felt like we were almost threatened by the speech, I'll be calling you. And, you know, I understand that. What do we have, seventy kids there?
No, well, just on that, I think if you have, you're on the, Ms. Kaufman, you're on the board, aren't you, there? Yeah. I thought that was a very ineffective way of communicating with us, because frankly, if he wants to send them down here and stay here for a day, that's fine, while they're fixing the, I mean, we have canceled school days at various times because of weather or things. I thought it was, I mean, I thought he was trying to intimidate us and I thought he was, I thought he was stupid.
He threatened us.
So I just, in terms of his communicating with boards, I think that's an ineffective way of communicating. So for what it's, for what it's worth.
I agree.
Threatened us.
I, well, I don't, I don't know what the language is, but.
I mean, but I felt, I thought it was, you know, good of them to come to try to explain it because they knew.
Right.
That, you know, you didn't want to take what one person in Dr. Monarch had to say, that this is what gives the opportunity for everybody. And, you know, so everybody has.
But if they would have an emergency and the roof falls in, or let's hope it doesn't, but we can handle it here, I mean, it's not the end of the world.
No, but it's going to cost the school district a ton more money if you do not, if we do not do it, if the actual, they'd like not to do it, it's going to cost the school much more money than it would if we would do it. Fifty-five, approximately fifty-five thousand a year for fifteen years compared to who knows what.
Say again, meaning it would cost more, is that what you're saying? It would cost more in the future?
If we do not, if we do not do it in the long run. But that's, you know, that's your decisions to.
Sure.
A lot of the things that's going on is they're doing it through, shall Act Seventy-Seven, which is the energy savings act. So a lot of what they're able to do now is funded through the energy savings that they're expected to have because of the retrofitted boilers and insulation and the roof and the more efficient A D E C, things of that nature. And the company that's doing the work, Chevron, guarantees a certain amount of energy savings in the operating cost if those savings aren't realized, Chevron's on hold for it.
And remember, Chevron is starting this project now and they're upfronting all the monies now, this doesn't take effect into our budget until two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So that's another plus, on the plus side, I would think.
They actually haven't started, they won't start.
No, they won't start until, but if it's agreed upon, they'll start now and not wait, they'll use their own money until it's time for us to.
Well, that money's not going to be, have to be paid back a year after it's completed. Am I right or wrong for Chevron to start paying back? A year after the job's completed, that's when you're going to start paying.
It's in, goes into the budget, yeah, two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
If you start nitpicking this stuff apart, it's going to cost you a lot more money in the long run, as the boiler goes down, the roof goes down, to go in there and do things haphazardly.
Peace.
To get things going, instead of coming in and making it more efficiency for the, what do you want to call it?
Innovations.
Lost the word.
That happens when we get old.
Happens all the time, happens all the time.
Be efficiency and economics and everything else. And it, for somebody to come in and find out something like that, you know, they've got to know what they're doing. That's my opinion.
One of the things that I'm told, and again, I don't know a grand amount about the C W C T C, there's a welding program that is supposed to be running there, they can't run because ventilation is not adequate to run the welding program, so therefore, students who are graduating from our C W C T C are unable to take that particular portion of their welding test to get their welding certificate when they graduate. It's impacting the program as well.
Community college has one, let's send them there. They have one, because of the Marcellus thing, they have the big thing with the pipelines and the welding. You know, again, there are options, there are options. Josie, I'm not opposed to this, you have to understand, I know where they're coming from.
I understand. It's all well thought into the dollar, I understand.
No, 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 it's not just that, but I've been on, this isn't my first board, and I can remember, oh, if you do this, it will be good for twenty-five years and everything will be, five years later, they're back in there whining, well, no, this isn't any good, we need to fix it. So these promises don't hold as much water with me.
Well, they've put this off for quite some time with the old administration. I mean, that's why it's in the shape that it's in, because it's been put off and put off and put off and put off. And that's what they ask, well, why did we let it get this way? Well, because administration kept thinking, the old administration kept thinking that it's going to, you know.
Well, Josie, they were getting money.
Thirty-seven years is a long time.
They were getting money.
To run stuff through, especially like Dr. Monarch said about the welding program, the ventilation is terrible. I got a nephew that takes that course and he said it's terrible. And where are we going to come if we happen to get six students from situation because it's inadequate for what we're trying to put out?
But what's my question is for thirty-seven years, they've had money coming in.
Yeah, but thirty-seven years, them people denied.
Why didn't they fix it?
Won't be, they didn't want to spend them.
Where did the money go? They should have the money then.
Well, thirty-seven years, they keep on building.
The fund balance is, so there's money left at the end of the year, it's refunded back to the districts.
It's returned, it's returned.
Right. Returned, refund, whatever you want to call it. So they start the year with zero, that's why every year we do the tax revenue anticipation note for the C W C T C to get them started, so they don't have the ability to, you know, like we did.
I think Butch has the answer, that I'm probably looking for the fact that do it all at one time is cheaper, but I also look at it like, do the things that are most important, like the roof, because, you know, they're coming in saying, all this stuff is going to break down.
The boiler's bad, it's really bad.
Everything's going to break down sooner or later. You know, I've got a water, I had a water tank that lasted twenty-five years, that's unheard of. And what I'm saying is, do we have to do everything right now? But like I said, Butch is probably right, it's probably cheaper to do it all right now.
Okay, you've got a roof, it's bad, you've got the boiler system, it's bad, you have the welding program that's put there shut down completely. This is education to kids that doesn't have the opportunity maybe go to college and get an education where they can go out and get a decent job in the fields around here to do. I mean, let's face reality, thirty-seven years, we got to do something. I just, that's my opinion, you can take what it's.
I find it hard to believe that something wasn't done for thirty-seven years, though, Butch.
Things are upsetting.
The boilers right now, they can't get parts to carry them, to keep them running. Now, I can't, Mr. Mizwa, we have combustion services coming that comes in on an annual basis, services are boilers, so they need new burners, new rods, they do this and that. Those boilers are so old that the parts aren't made anymore, there's not available.
I told you, Jack, my heart goes after that, it really does. But we're looking at a couple million dollars here ourselves, you know, and I don't think we're going to have much choice in the matter, to tell you the truth, but I think it's not going to be something to take lightly.
What did they finally tell us, it probably cost us per month or whatever, like a car payment or something? To this effect, because we're not getting our free fund back, they're going to reinvest it in what we have.
But having said that, I'm not sure I quite agree with that.
Well, no, it's just.
And we told them that at our superintendent's meeting, you have two seventy-three a month and we don't get your refund, but every year when we do our budgeting, we budget for that return of money. So even though it's, you know, we're not going to give you a refund and it's going to cost you two hundred and seventy-three dollars a month more.
No.
But we're using it for something else.
Right. You either pay up front or you're going to do it this way.
What is it, did you pull together the figure, is it around fifty, sixty, seventy thousand a year? What does it come to?
Fifty-five.
Fifty, is it, what was it, was it fifty-five? Okay.
But over the fifteen years, it's eight hundred and sixteen thousand.
And that's based on, on the projection, the interest rating.
Right.
And if Frazier gets in, it could be a little less.
Yeah.
Well, there'd be a VOTEC school in fifteen years.
Upset.
Like I said, I don't think we're going to have much choice, but I have, it's hard for me to.
It's committing something.
It's committing something to somebody else's children and so forth, and I just don't feel good about it.
Well, yes and no.
It's our kids.
To the kids that we're sending there because it's proportional based on the Avondale membership, so districts who send more will be paying more, districts who send fewer kids are paying less.
As far as that welding program, we may have three kids there, you know, like making such an issue of that, there might be three of our kids there, you know.
I think it's just the word life in general because of the safety, you know, they won't even hold a piece of paper up to the suction. So you want to make sure the deer quality is, and it's not just three of our kids, it's all of the kids in that whole building, their life, their health.
Reminder, what do we have, what did we have generally, seventy, eighty kids? How many kids go up there each year?
About seventy.
Is that what it is?
Mr. Kaufman, listen, number on there. How many kids do we have going to C W C T C with you?
Seventy, eighty.
Okay.
Just have to vote on it, I'm like, we're just going to have to vote on it.
That'll be January.
Oh, so it's not going to go on the agenda for next month?
No, no.
So it's still in December.
I put it on here just to give you guys some time to have the discussion that we just had, you know.
I don't want to think about it that long.
Jack, Frank and Regional, they're the only ones that actually voted to do this, right?
Hendraford.
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 Did you hear any more, Jack, any more districts?
No, and actually, P T's going to have to vote again on the formal resolution, they pretty much set it.
Remember, I said I'd like to know that.
Yeah, and no other districts have voted because there's no resolution out there, so they're all having the same kinds of discussions that we're having.
I'm sure they are.
And for the same reasons, I might add. Okay, just to give you an update on the paint property, at the last voting meeting, we'd authorized the administration to move forward on acquiring a small portion of the paint property at the northern end of the stadium. I spoke with Mr. Payton the following day and he indicated that, not having heard from us for a while, I thought maybe we weren't interested anymore, so he actually turned the property over to a Realtor. So we spoke with the Realtor, a gentleman named Van from Leganier Valley Real Estate, and explained to him what we were trying to do, and his suggestion was to have a survey done of the piece of property that we were interested in pursuing. So Mr. Mizwa has been working with a surveyor and that will be scheduled as soon as the surveyor has a day to do it. And once we get a square footage and get some stakes and ground and so on, then we can certainly have the praise done and try to arrive at a cost that poses those to move forward into the salary. So that's just an update on where we are there.
I have two questions, Jack. Are they still willing to sell us something?
Yes.
And does the fact that it's been turned over to the Realtor make any difference?
So that means we're working with Van instead of.
But we're not committed to them selling the whole property?
No, they're willing to subdivide.
Okay. That's great. That's great, thank you.
And that will, we'll have to change some things on the area involved.
Right, they're advertising something, bless them.
But, you know, I did, when I spoke to the Realtor and told him about the conversations that I had with the owner, you know, he actually used the word subdivide.
Good.
And suggested we move forward with the survey. Stage curtains are ordered, they had originally asked to install them the week of December the seventeenth. That's concert season, folks, so we certainly couldn't have them, you know, working while we're trying to do our concerts. So they will be here, I was hoping down the, down the break, stage is about, over break, so it'll be early January when they can maybe get those done, but they are being manufactured and sent and everything right now.
So we get through, okay? We get through, okay?
Yeah.
They can't come like at the end of November, I mean, they're not ready.
Probably not done yet.
There's all the curtains elsewhere.
New business, transportation.
Okay, at our last meeting, we did authorize the administration to enter into conversation with Blue's Transit and Mrs. Quest Transit, Dr. Scott, myself, Mr. Swink and Mr. Sale. And on two occasions, one occasion with Mr. Mrs. Schellmann and one occasion with Mr. Schellmann, we did present a letter here to us indicating that if the board is interested in an early bird agreement using the same contract I have, there would be a one point five percent reduction in school bus pricing for the remainder of this year, a four percent reduction in van pricing for the remainder of this year. Then for thirteen fourteen, there would be a price freeze at that same rate, but the remainder of four years, they're asking for an annual increase of three percent. And there's a letter there that has some facts and figures that Mr. Schellmann has We do have language in our contract that our minimum youth is eight years old or newer, that would be the aggregate. There's a penalty penalty for vehicles that leave under fourteen years old. And again, on page two, you see what those, what those prices would be. And just to give you a little bit of background, one of the first things we did is we prepared this color sheet you have here, green and yellow, and if you can see on that sheet, Mr. Sale, we figured this out, it's the Southwood at zero, that being the base price of what we're paying now. And then we took other districts and determined whether we were paying more or less per bus. And obviously, you can see that the Dairy Area is paying a significant amount less per bus than we are. Mount Pleasant is paying a little bit more per bus than we are, and this is on and on. And we thought that was pretty curious, and so we did a little bit more research and we got some information that Dairy Area School District has actually done, and that's the sheet that we got in the packet that had the right-hand column, part was cut off, we received it on fax, so I asked that to be emailed to me again this week, and it had a good copy on the desk in front of me. So we looked at Dairy, for example, who appears to have very low pertinent bus rate, they are paying, the district is paying for a good bit of fuel, the contractor appears to be paying a dollar and fifty cents per gallon for fuel, unlike our contractor who is paying for all fuel up to three dollars a gallon. Unlike our contractor who is paying for all fuel up to three dollars a gallon, and when it reaches three-ten, there's a fuel escalation charge of a dollar a day a bus. And looking at some of the others, Franklin Regional, again, looking, you know, like they're paying a little bit less than we are for a sixty-five to seventy-passenger bus. But again, the, there's a fuel cost there, if you look at some of their mini buses and activity runs, some of the districts are paying for an extra bus to go to the Career Technology Center. We are not paying for an extra bus to go to the Career Technology Center, that's just considered one of the runs that one of our existing buses makes. If you look at the activity, bus rates, there's certainly a great difference there. Not being an expert on transportation and being newly educated, after having a closing with Mr. and Mrs. Shouman, I have invited them here this evening to answer any questions that you might have, Dr. Scott and Mr. Swink are also here, and sat in on those meetings. So we would certainly open this topic for your discussion and questions. And Art, if you would like to come up to the microphone so that you can be heard and-
Can I raise them while Yaw's not on here?
Apparently did not respond to the survey.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are there questions? I mean, I probably didn't really do a job explaining all that, so if you have questions about Mr. Shouman's proposal or anything that I told you about how we compared to other districts, and we-
The information for what we're paying today is two dollars, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, is that correct?
That's for a large bus, yes.
For a large bus.
Yeah, that does three trips in the morning and three trips in the afternoon.
So the discount we would get if we would do, from what I'm reading here, would be two sixty, two hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-two cents. If we would sign this by the end of November.
Yeah, you would receive, basically works out to one and a half percent discount. And any type there, anytime there's a quote given for a long-term contract, there, you take in variables and you, you take the past, the Consumer Price Index for transportation is what we work off of. And we take those figures and use those as a basis for what we should increase annually. Because that, as you were talking about early in your budgetary discussions, that, for instance, you were talking about, Dr. Feick, you were talking about insurance going up ten percent. Well, there's, every year, the transportation index changes, and I submitted a copy of that to Bill Salem with ranges from four point one to under two percent. And we take that, go back ten or twelve years, and then try to use that as a basis for what we can hope will be an increase that will cover the future costs. And as you know, the fuel market is very volatile, and our business deals, just about everything deals with fuel, tires, belts, antifreeze, so on and so forth, lubrication. All that is driven by the fuel price. So when we got to the end of this contract and we have our tire prices developed, we felt that we could extend that discount to the district if they chose to sign in a new contract and move forward. Five-year, for us to make an expenditure, we buy about, pretty close to a million dollars' worth of buses every contract, every five-year contract. For us to make expenditures like that, we need some type of security that there will be some work for those units that we purchase.
I really don't know much about this, but it seems that if you go to a certain mark, there's an additional charge for bus.
Yes, as Dr. Molnar was speaking of, some districts ask the contractor to pay for the first dollar, quarter, dollar fifty per gallon. In this district, we pay for everything up to three dollars, and then there's an escalation that the ceiling is set at three dollars per gallon, which this year you have no contribution. Every, all of our fuel that we get is deducted from our payment from the school district.
By the second token, if it would go down to a certain mark, we don't give any further discount?
No, but you could put that in there, I mean, I would entertain that, you could set a basement price, but history has shown us we haven't. There was an anomaly about two thousand and eight that it dipped down for about six months, that was a really unusual low price. Who knows, who knows? We'll know in a couple of weeks, won't we?
The money that, the fuel that we're buying from the consortium, where does that fit in with this three dollars a gallon?
We purchase the money, we purchase the fuel.
There's just money, I might-
Right.
Whenever, a lot of districts get together, the buying power that large quantities enable us to purchase through the consortium, purchase fuel at a better rate. Sometimes it's a better rate, several years ago, we locked in a rate that was quite, quite a bit over the norm. I think it went up seventy-five cents in one year, and we locked in the gallons in May, April or May to bid, about the same time the railroads bid. And in August, late August, it was decided by the school district that they did not need said amount of buses. So we locked in this much fuel, but we used this much fuel, and so we were in a, in a tight spot at that point. The profit margin in transportation is, in school bus transportation is very small. So it doesn't allow for quotes like this, it doesn't allow for a healthy company to survive with that kind of, with a seventy-five cent swing. So what that fuel escalation does for us, it's similar to what Mount Pleasant has. What that does for us, it offsets the increase from a three-dollar ceiling, about one-third of the cost that we would actually realize. So what I'm saying basically is, whenever we're loaded up with a high fuel price, then Southmoreland bears the brunt of one-third of that increase. And that's basically how that escalator works. Yeah, I could sleep much better at night if the district would entertain paying, letting me pay you a dollar fifty for every gallon, and then every gallon we use at activity buses or every gallon that we use on the school trips, you know, that's, that's the advantage that some of the other contractors have. But, so that's a very good deal for the contractors, is what I'm trying to establish. They only have to worry about that first dollar fifty a gallon, and the school district bears the burden of the rest.
That's what we paid for that time, Mr.? We had to pay excess money for that, was it?
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago.
That had to do with, that was the year when transportation was revamped and we had pulled the oil company by ex-gallon, we used less than ex-gallon.
Right, that's what he said, yes, so we paid, it was eighteen thousand dollars or something, I remember paying that.
So we ended up having to purchase, actually, it was a settlement, I believe, with the oil company, I wasn't really involved in that, through someone's settlement.
I, I was under the impression that we got this really good deal on gas, but what Mr. Salem says is we don't pay tax, is what it announced it.
Yeah, as a school district, you wouldn't pay road tax, because the state feels if you paid the road tax, we would increase our price to you. You would have to increase, look for increases through the tax body, it just is a vicious cycle.
But what I'm saying is we don't pay less for gas, we just hit a break on not paying for the taxes.
It's, it's basically rack price without road tax.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Now, you have down here the base price-
Well, that's our, we may be getting a little bit of a discount based on our volume.
But it isn't what I thought it was.
It's not a huge, right, right.
Since here the base price is three dollars per gallon, and the contractor receives an additional dollar per day, per bus, or van, for every ten cents per gallon over the three-dollar price.
This, this year, the price is three oh nine, so that was not engaged.
You don't get it, 'cause there has to be a full ten cents.
Yes.
But it says that you're receiving a dollar per vehicle per day, eleven to twelve, and that is for what?
That is for, that dollar goes towards that increase of fuel cost. So an average vehicle is using between fifteen and twenty gallons a day. If the fuel price went up, let's, let's use twenty gallons a day as a, as a gauge, okay? It would go up two dollars, you paid a dollar of that, that two dollars, but you've paid nothing towards activity runs. You've paid nothing towards any kind of after-school transportation. There's so many more avenues that that increased fuel price comes through, that's where I came up with the one-third. It's not actually half, it's one-third of what-
First of all, I want to tell you, this is overwhelming to me. I'm about to rest the board.
The numbers make me nervous as well, unless one of you have a crystal ball, we're, we're just guessing, we're hoping that we're right.
That's why it's so very difficult for us, because when we, when we got the first sheet, it was a no-brainer, until we found out that he was, this district buys this for bus company, this district does that. You don't do any of that, so it was very difficult to, you know, make a valid comparison.
And, and I don't think that's by accident, I think a lot of, especially national contractors, don't want comparisons done. When you deal with someone like First Student who owns Greyhound and First Transit and First Group, they own every bit of railway in Scotland. They know how to generate income, so they switch the formula up, and they're a very safe company, though, for a large company.
I just wanted to say that no one on this board has had anything but good words to say about the service-
I'm pleased to hear that, there's a lot of people work very hard every day to hear comments like that.
That is not a factor in this, it is not a factor.
Right, right.
One thing I think we need to look at, it says the daily activity bus and tutoring is almost a hundred dollars a day. Field trips are a hundred and nine dollars.
Do some, like P, on field trips, do, I remember when I was doing P T A, didn't some of the organizations pay you and not the district?
Correct, there, it's divided up, and I don't know, I can't tell you right offhand, but there are some organizations that take care of the transportation costs themselves. And then we would be, give remuneration at the end of the year or from those organizations.
Is your company still Grooms, is that what you call yourselves, Grooms?
The parent company is Grooms Transit, I'm still in the process of purchasing the company, ongoing, so-
But what would you call your buses, Grooms?
Quest Transit.
You'll call them Quest, yeah, and I'm sorry, but what is your name?
Arthur Shouman.
Arthur Shouman, thank you.
Kind of answered- Something Dr. Scott just pointed out too, in terms of the field trips, most field trips, transportation is taken, paid for with a fund rate. And so that, that really is not a big issue, much area for the district. Touring buses, again, not across the general fund, but through federal, federal monies, we're not doing any law plans, I would originally do, because we're doing title one monies. So, a general fund monies.
It could be, there's that, huh?
Or it could go away.
Could go away, yeah, we would have to deal with that in the meantime. I had one question, though, and I know you're tired of hearing it, but if we happen to close a school, and there's no transportation going up there, everybody's going to the same place, it would seem to me that's gonna make a big difference, and these rates should go down if you don't have a whole school to go to.
Well, they're certainly based on miles, but we, it would be hard to approach that question until we saw what we had to work with.
The number of buses that we brought out, we would not change significantly, at the elementary level. All of our buses stop at those buildings, so they're, they're coming from all corners of the district, and stop at those buildings. So they would become more, as they stop in one building instead, it may change the number of miles, probably would not significantly affect the number of buses unless we have a significant decline in these things.
So our buses are filled to the limit right now?
Some of them are approaching being overloaded. So they're, at some levels, you will not have the population, and some areas just won't support filling the bus in the time you have to pick up and deliver the students. But throughout the years, the bus population has been tweaked and manipulated to try to keep full buses. You just wanna be very sensitive to your reimbursement from the state, because capacity and miles are what drives the formula. You wanna make sure that the bus is are full and your miles are high.
Right.
And for your reimbursement, because the at-last check, your reimbursement's pretty decent for the size of school district we have to work with.
I think many of us have seen buses with three kids on them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you follow them, they're, they're, there's nobody on them.
It depends on where they're at on their run, they, I can't think of any bus that would leave a school building with three students on.
Pretty much activity, we're thinking, I'm talking about activity buses, I've seen-
Well, that's, that's a variable, you never know what you're gonna, what students you're gonna have, what you're not gonna have. I've gotten calls at six-thirty at night looking for an activity bus because they were so full that, we have two buses that cover the whole district, so, you know, I kept in touch with the parents to make sure that their student did arrive home safely. But the activity lets out at five-thirty, and an hour later, the parents are looking for the students, so I think that's the exception and not the norm, to see three students on an activity bus.
One of the things that Art, Charlie, prior to Charlie Bill, pointed out, in some of those remote areas, we're no longer taking, they have a bus, taking smaller buses, am I correct, in some of the areas where-
Right.
Population is for a full bus.
But there, again, if you're working with reimbursement, you want the size bus.
Yeah.
It's, it's inefficient, but if that's the formula you have to work with, you want large buses traveling lots of miles. It's, we didn't set it up that way, but if that's the program you have to work within, you wanna make sure you get your reimbursement out of that program.
On the fuel, for the, using the sixty-five, seventy-two passenger bus, what would you, you kinda hinted at, I think you said something of fifteen to twenty gallons a day. Would, would that be a number that you would use in your-
Yes, yes, it depends on the route, but you average right in around the fifteen to seventeen gallons a day.
So that could be in the neighborhood of fifty dollars?
For fuel?
Fuel.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, let's take, let's, I'm just looking at dairy.
Mm-hmm.
In the dairy's case, the district, they're quite a bit lower, the district pays for the fuel.
Yes.
What would be the, so roughly, we come out about even, in fact, looks as though we're, we're getting a little bit the better deal of that.
Yes.
If you add the fuel, they'd be a little higher yet than we are.
Exactly, something that I've been working with to, if you look at Franklin Regional.
Yeah.
They, at glance, you, that looks like a surprising lower price. But as we were discussing at our last meeting with Dr. Molnar and Dr. Scott, that the district pays for everything above a dollar fifty. And if you work that out, that comes into, just plugging in into our numbers, that- And if you work that out, that comes into, just plugging in into our numbers, that brings that price right up to twenty-three to twenty-four dollars a day more.
Right.
If you take that fuel allowance into into play.
Just kind of the question.
So then the numbers don't quite look as attractive as they do.
Right.
Right now.
What what are the, what are the merits or the problems of the district providing the fuel?
Well.
Versus versus the business.
It's good for the contractor to stabilize the price, it's bad for the district because of the volatility of the market. If the district pays for the fuel, they may be more interested in making arrangements to change routes more quickly, you know, a more aggressive transportation system until you get involved with special needs students. Then everything goes out the window, because there's different rules to that type of transportation.
Actually, that's what we did several years back, which was the system.
Right, you couldn't make the district bigger, we can just go through it more often.
So we did, you know, think there's aggressive measures, and then we ended up something with the oil company, was either we, you know, eliminated the buses.
Yeah.
So we're getting more full-student miles on a bus, and less miles on four buses.
And.
So we can be, cook that aggressive approach already.
And and if we could avoid that, what happened that particular year we're talking about, if, whenever we purchase the fuel, whenever we state the quantity, if that's even on the table, we can certainly buy short.
Right.
But we try to buy as many gallons close to what we'll need for this contract as we can. So if there's an more open line of communications to what the thoughts are, but may, that may not even been on the table at that point. But because it was an anomaly, it certainly turned ugly.
I have two questions, somebody told me that a school bus gets five miles per gallon, is that true?
That's correct, stopping and starting all day long.
Okay, and my last question is this, and I promise you, I'll ask another thing, why the issue, why the hurry to sign it in November, what what does that matter?
We can lock in some long-term contracts with tires, with Firestone, local dealer, and it enables us to start purchasing. If I order a bus today, I will be fortunate to get it by June. So I need to make those commitments, and with the the financial markets, the way they are, interest rates are still attractive. If the economy picks up after election, when it picks up after election. That if we get into an inflation situation, then that's quite a bit more to pay for per vehicle if we, because we have to finance vehicles. So, all that we have to take into consideration, and we need to seize the moment if the opportunity is there.
Thank you, I understand.
Hey, Art, I, when we last met, you mentioned several things that I thought were very informative, and I'd like you to address briefly with the board. And one thing, when you were speaking about larger national companies and their commitment to the equipment they put on the road, also safety records. And the third thing I thought was very interesting was what I think in the industry you call the tuck-in.
Yeah. Well, well, take for example Norwin School District. If you go to their building, you see a large lot of school buses. All those school buses on that lot do not just serve Norwin. They can, a large company can, they find their place with what happened with Hemfield, that's probably the most recent. It's a large school district. The average small operator like myself would not be encouraged to go into a large district like that because of the the outlay to buy the buses' existing equipment that may or may not be upkept. And what they'll do is they'll, if you go to Norwin School District, you'll see P T, Penn Tralfer Buses there as well. And small districts become a tuck-in company, they they put a big facility in or have a big facility there, and then they try to lock in smaller districts, and then they tuck them into that same building. We have some drivers for us that used to work for companies such as that, and like in Mount Pleasant, you may hear three or four different school districts on one radio station. Do you know who you're talking to, if there's an emergency, are you going to be able to expedite the emergency if there's two hundred buses connected to one radio frequency? You know, that's, so that's something that potentially, if if you were to go out to bid or request proposals, you have to be very careful that you spell out what it is that you're looking for. And that may not be something that comes into your mind right away, that you want your own radio station. But it's it's invaluable if they're, if you're looking for a child that may or may not go on a bus that was supposed to be a parent pickup.
By the way, that's daily occurrence.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we had three students with no ones at, no parents or guardians at their stop today. So that's that's something that happens quite frequently. So you have something like that, and you have safety records you have to be aware of. There's one of the companies on this paper here, has a lackluster safety record. You just have to make sure that the the comparisons are factual and you look deeper than just the numbers. There's a value in safe service, there's a value in folks that do business right in your own backyard. So that that's sort of what the basis of that spoke about. If you get a nationwide company, some of them are self-insured, most of them are. And you you don't, you don't quite have the connection to the community or the participation in the community that you may want to have. So it's, it depends, if that's a value to you, that's what you get with your current provider. Us, we're part of the community, we live here, we work here, and we spend our money here, so. What was the other issue, Dr. Scott, I'm sorry?
You talked about with maybe a different or a national company, that you don't necessarily get the commitment to the equipment that you provide.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Whenever a company owns sixty thousand pieces of equipment, and you may get a VIN number for a new piece of equipment, but unless you go and check the facility, are you sure that you're going to have that new bus in your district? Or isn't the new bus going to be in Philadelphia somewhere, or? You you just have to be careful. I've seen it happen, and that's why I say, if you go to as many school buildings as I do, and you're sensitive to what type of equipment are running out of the schools, you become aware, especially if I know that the contract says in that district they're supposed to replace ten percent or twenty percent of their vehicles a year to fulfill a contract. And it gets quite interesting to see if that actually occurs or not. You can get the reimbursement for the VIN number, but you may not enjoy the safety advances of a new vehicle in your district.
Any other questions for Mr. Shouman?
Thank you. By the way, it's a pleasure doing business with this district, it's operated very professional, and we get a lot of help from everyone that we knock on their door whenever we have a problem that is beyond our realm. It, it's, we work with a lot of people, you're talking about VOTAC, we walk with, work with a lot of VOTAC schools and career and technology centers, and they can, they can pick any contractor they want to. They work with all these contractors you're looking at, and they come to a little company in Scottsdale. So if, excuse my voice, I've been battling a cold. If you have any questions or concerns, maybe you should talk to them as well. With competition, we do continually renew our contract with Greensburg YMCA for all their summer programs, and there again, they have a plethora of contractors that they can deal with, and they choose a small company like us. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you say thirteen fourteen was a freeze, and then four percent, is that the number you gave me, am I correct?
It's in the letter.
I just didn't hear you.
Let me find it here, not.
Every year after that, is it three percent?
Yeah, it was some.
It's a three, right?
Yes, yeah, thirteen fourteen. They would maintain the January through May thirteen pricing.
Right.
And then for the remaining four years, they would request a three percent annual increase.
Okay, I just missed that one, thank you.
I wanted to check it before I spoke.
You brought it there. I told you this was over my head.
You might remember, a few months ago, Tractor's Client contacted us, wishing to donate some handfuls. I can't begin to tell you the variety that we got, Mr. Pollard might be able to, he came down and picked everything up, but I can tell you there were fork wrenches and hammers and flyers and screwdrivers and things that I couldn't identify, pipe wrenches and all kinds of things. They called last week and they have more. So we would certainly like to accept those, both for use by our students and our maintenance department as well. So we will ask you to agree to approve another contract with them, stating that we will not hold them liable if a hammer were to break and hit somebody in the head, and we guarantee that those are used for student use and not taken out in someone's trunk. We got a letter from Jacobs Creek Watershed. As you know, they're working on a wetlands project out back of this building for us, since it's currently underway, I think they've had to stop, but because of some of the weather they've had, there's quite a large hole out there in the backhoe, so I know they're working to get that done. They would like to apply for another grant for one of our properties, and that would be the south end of the football stadium where the bus is parked. And you might remember, we had a discussion about that a few months ago, because there was a place in the pavement where there was no pavement. We were able, through, we worked with one of our board members with township supervisors, to get a donation of some ground-up asphalt, which certainly got us out of the mud. But the engineer from the watershed association would like to actually put a stormwater management system in there where there are actual catch basins and the water is routed underground back into that tributary of Jacobs Creek. Included in that grant, if it were to go through, would be paving of at least a good bit of that area. And that would be at no cost to the district, it would be through grant money. So we would ask you to approve a preliminary agreement with them, allowing them to come in, do some surveys, do some measurements, do whatever they need to do to apply for the grant. If they were successful, then we would come back to you with their final proposal, just as we did for the wetlands, and ask you for your approval to proceed with the project. Questions on that? I like this guy, he keeps coming and saying, here's what I can do for you, it won't cost me anything. Next item I have for you is not on the agenda, because it just came to our attention on Tuesday, actually, and the packets were already pretty much completed. But Mr. Mizwa has been working to get some quotes for some work to be done on our ball fields. And Lee, I would invite you to the podium to elaborate on this just a little bit, if you would. The, two of the quotes are just for some routine work on our infield, which we have to do every couple of years. And then the the other quote has to do with that area on the, in the outfield where the drainage is so poor, and there's a swamp and a ditch. It's actually been a safety hazard, we've talked about it for quite some time, we've been trying to get quotes on it for quite some time, and nobody seems to want to give us a quote. But Lee has been successful, so Lee, I would be, elaborate a little bit on that.
Yes, I've made numerous calls to different contractors, few of them we've done past work with. It's just a hit and miss, someone would come out, some wouldn't. This gentleman here that came out, gave me an estimate, we walked through both fields, walked through the softball field drainage area, and he supplied us with quotes for each each of the projects. I seemed very knowledgeable, and I, I actually looked at possibly renting some of the equipment and doing it ourselves, but we couldn't even match that price once we had the infield mix hauled in. This is the only company that I did get hold of that would even look at all three fields. I have an, I had one extra quote on the drainage at the softball field, but it was quite a bit higher than this, almost three times that amount. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions and discussion on that?
There are three things here, and each say estimate, am I missing something here?
Please.
One is for five thousand seven hundred, one is?
That's for the softball field drainage area.
And then three thousand six hundred for something else?
The next one is renovation of the Alberton softball field. A contractor began this work approximately a year and a half or two years ago, and he did not come back to finish it. He wasn't paid, and he just just walked off the job. That still has to be completed. Then the third one is the renovation of a high school baseball field. Now, in the maintenance department, we were able to paint the dugouts, repair the fence, repair the post, cut the grass, do all the tree trimming, but we don't have the equipment to actually rake the infield area and to apply the, purchase the infield mix in to apply that. It takes a lot of specialized equipment.
This all has, also has to do with the mounting, the pitcher's mound.
Pitcher's mound.
Proper elevation and all those things.
Yes, proper drainage, we have some areas up at the baseball field that won't drain.
This seems half the cost of what we paid for the baseball field before, it wasn't like eight or nine thousand dollars?
We did that before, it was six, wasn't it before?
I remember thinking, oh, that's one month.
That's the one, that's the one, the guy didn't finish right.
No, that was Alberton, they did.
Alberton, the softball field, he didn't finish that.
At the baseball field, we just did that, I don't know, not just, where your son was.
Two years ago, two years ago.
And I mean, this price seems good compared to what we paid for.
Do we have to do this every two years, Josie?
If I might jump in there, just from softball field, yeah, because you know what, the winds come across there, blow the
Take the mound down.
The mixed off field into the outfield, so, yeah, you do every so many years have to get a new mix put down, so, yeah.
So all of this is thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, that's for all of it.
Can that come out of the athletic budget?
Well, this here, this will just cure at the softball field, the water account, is that correct?
The first one, that's that's where the water's coming off the bank.
Right.
He's actually going to put a pipe around each side of the field.
How will that impact anybody running out there?
It'll be refilling seeded.
Okay, so so there's not going to be any open drinker, any drag tires or anything like that?
That ditch that's there will be gone.
No, that's, it's just, they lay the gravel and put the pipe with the cloth on, then they put more gravel, and then they'll seed on top.
Josie asked you, will that eliminate that drain that's on that ditch?
Like that ditch there where Ricky Brown and all them were falling in and going center field, is that big dip that'll be eliminated?
It should, I'd have to talk to the contractor.
That's what the danger part is.
It's it's very wet right there.
Yeah.
This should take care of the whole outfield, am I correct?
Yes.
The whole way around that bottom of that hill, where all that water laid, we've been lucky, nobody got hurt.
Right.
Yes.
Right up against there.
That's what this is supposed to do.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
And the way this reads, you're going to have topsoil on top of. And the way this reads, you're going to have topsoil on top of two B gravel. There's slope forward and the pipe's going to be under. And there's actually going to be sod and everything on top of it. The ditch is going to run around so that it could actually go on top of it.
Right. There is a, an existing drain pipe near the SBC playground that was just paved. That would stay in place. He's just going to run the ditch next to that.
There is a place for an outlet for that water to go to.
Right now...
Where is it going to drain to from that field around that corner? Where is it going to go?
Right now, they drain naturally, they drain down over the hill. We have drains in the hillside where the ball field drains down over the hill, towards that field, the planted field.
I mean, there is an outlet for that so it gets away. Or is it going to be all underground? Is it going to water the field or underground? Is it going to have an outlet?
It'll have an outlet. It'll have an outlet.
The infield at one side. We don't have any plans to do anything to that in respect that it doesn't drain very well. Pulls water many, many days.
First case.
From my understanding, I did locate the drainage pipes from the infield. But the contractors I spoke to, the method they used to use by putting the cloth down, they, they no longer use that method. And that cloth gets clogged and doesn't drain properly. The maintenance department's actually gone through with a rod and poked holes down through that cloth. And it's drained out. In order to remedy that situation, you have to do the whole entire field.
Kind of aside from this, related to the field, the scoreboards that have them functioning, the electrical, is that something that we can do in-house? Or is that, is that something that needs to be contracted out?
The softball?
The baseball this spring, at least when I was there, it was not functioning, the scoreboard. Maybe it hasn't been for a number of years.
The baseball field, but...
Does it usually function or?
I thought the baseball field functioned. We raised it.
Is that the issue? It's not an electric, it's not a, it's, no one is there who is assigned to do that?
Last year, we used it, we used it for all varsity games. When we were there, it was on. He actually, one problem was it was kind of down by the fence. So we raised it this year. It's an older scoreboard. And we did have a bribe. We used it for every varsity game.
Okay. Okay. You know what? I think it was a JV game maybe when I saw it. I didn't think of it.
JV would play up there there.
Yeah, no, it's, so it is functioning.
We removed the top panel, slid the scoreboard up on the post, and then put the top panel underneath. And so the numbers were raised.
The one down the softball field, did it work?
Yep. It's hard to see, it's hard to see the way that, you know, way it's set up with the sign. It's hard to see with those old, old light bulbs, but it does. We did use, we used it last year. Last year, we used their most scoreboards for all games. If they were there, we were using them.
The water actually coming down into the softball field. I even took the zero turn mower over there a few times myself. I couldn't get up at that bank to cut it. It would, it would just slide right back down. That's how much moisture was coming out.
That's a safety issue right there.
Couple of years ago, when that softball field, when me and Keith was out there, you'd walk it down, feel it, touch the water.
I've been...
When it's wet, it's real wet.
Center field, you sink in blocking.
They think that will all take care of that water, just that one drain? Without putting feeder drains in there to the outfield? Just take that extra water away?
We believe it's coming out of the, the bank. That's why in the work description, he has install a curtain drain. To block any excess water. If it's coming up through this outfield, there's no way for us to tell. During the dry weather, when we did go out there and it was wet, it was coming out of the hill.
Is this something you're looking for us to vote next week? And then he'll, he'll start if weather permitting? That receipt's good for ninety days?
Yeah, weather permitting, he's, he's willing to do this. It's a, when we were out there, it was a beautiful day.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there's going to be some better... Now, the grass probably won't grow until spring, early spring, but it'll be seeded.
It's about the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last thing that I guess public consumption is, Mr. Miller had wanted to talk a little bit about the Legislative Council at the PSE conference.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say two things on that. Maybe that's next week your report in. But the one is the speech we got on American education and on the uniqueness of American education. I can't think of the, the person's name, but he grew up in, as kid, he was a, he grew up as a kid in China.
Oh, Yang Shao.
Yang Shao, okay. Dr. Yang Shao. But the, the reason I say that is it reminded me of everything that is strong about American education and why I've had misgivings about the intensive testing that has, has come through the state level here in the last ten, fifteen years here. No, thank you, no child left behind. But, but, so I, I don't know. And I suppose I'm always going to be some, or maybe, maybe sometime the law will be changed. I, I would, I would certainly like to see a greater degree of local control on testing. And it doesn't mean that you, we, we're not responsible statewide or nationally. But he, he gave the, the example. It is, we're constantly compared with China, India. And, and those are the frame of reference here on how we're doing on tests. But his, his point was that American education, if you look at patents, innovation, what America does best in terms of entrepreneurial, that is, and, and it separated that just to use a figure of speech, I'm talking, I don't have my notes here. A figure of speech of the, of a sausage grinder. Where the school is a sausage grinder and just kind of has a completely uniform product. And, and in some ways, and some, and if that is the goal, well, okay. Then standardizing everything is the way to go. It's like, you know, turning out an automobile. You, you want, if you're buying a certain model, you want exactly the window, that. His point was that American education has been more personalistic. And I don't remember exactly what his terms were. But, but as such that if, that, that the base is that we, that everybody reads and writes and is able to do mathematics, I mean, that should just be a given. And frankly, it's, if, and I, and I think that, you know, and just on a common sense level, that the whole testing falls down because you do have people who just genetically, they're wired to be gifted, others are handicapped and, and will never be able to do mathematics and reading on, on, on the certain level. That's just, I mean, so, so why even make a whole system and make people follow into this, I mean, into this kind of a, sort of a sausage, and he uses image of sausage factory? So having said that, I, I, it sort of, it was a very ritual reminder to me of, and I, I know we do, our, our teachers, our administrators, working in this kind of, of emphasizing what is best. And that is a kind of a personalistic approach. Having said that, you know, I know Dr. Scott works hard on the tests. So let's pass them all. Let's, let's do, do what we need to do here, here these days. But, but I don't see it as a virtue. I, I don't. It's not a penultimate. I mean, it's, it's not the ultimate value is, is of having everybody be standardized. I think the, the ultimate value is that everybody achieving to their highest level and being able to create, being able to cope with life, being able to have a job, being, that, that's the goal. So I don't know. It was a refreshing speech, saying too much, but that's...
Levi, Levi.
If somebody else wants, I see Mike, Mr. Mancer nodding his head.
It's a segue to what I want to talk about. That's the National Common Core standards.
Oh, okay.
It's called Controlling Education from the Top.
Okay.
And it is exactly, exact, this is a white paper that was produced by the Pioneer Institute, the American Principles Project, the Washington Policy Center, the Pacific Research Institute, written in the liberal state of Massachusetts. And it says that Common Core, the National Common Core standards are going to be a disaster because it's the sausage maker. You feed all the kids in and then they all come out the same. It's exactly taking away all local control, Levi. But what, I got a phone call on this and I did a lot of research. I found out that the, the national standards have already been shoved into Pennsylvania, with the Pennsylvania standards, and nobody even knew it. I didn't know it until I found out and I got this, this information. But I think for Levi, it just couldn't be more relevant. The National Common Core state standards were not created by the states, but by a private organization in Washington DC with lavish funding from private entities, private entities. And what happened is they used race to the top and no child left behind to impose standards on the states. But the standard, the mediocre quality is an issue. The standards which are intended to prepare students for non-selective community colleges rather than four-year universities are inferior to those of many of the states and no better than many of the others. The language arts consists of empty skill sets that will reduce the level of reading to a middle school level. That's going to be the standard for our country, reading at a middle school level. Then it talks about the standards and assessments that are driving this, all this testing that is being done. It's just testing, testing, testing. And they're just going to keep getting lower and lower and lower. But what, it's going to cost sixteen billion dollars over seven years to put in these standards. But the sad thing is that these Common Core standards are a disdain for the American people. The federal government and private organizations have imposed standards on the states and local entities. They have done so in a manner that denies people and their elected legislators any chance to review these standards and keep them in. But this will shock you. On page thirty-four, see it, guys? It's a disclaimer. Listen to this, a disclaimer. "The Common Core state standards are provided as is and with all faults and any kind of express implied statutory or limited, without limitation warranties, et cetera, et cetera, where the presence," now listen to this, "a particular infringement accuracy where the presence or absence of errors, whether or not they were discovered. Under no circumstances will these people who did this testing be liable for any direct, indirect, incidental, et cetera. And no punitive damage can be caused on any combination thereof. And even, even if they were advised that there is a possibility of risk and potential damage, they are released from all liability." Those are the standards that are now in place. And they snuck them in with Pennsylvania's. I was absolutely sick when I saw that. They were to have these hearings and they never held them. They just rammed them through. It's all based on money. And it, for example, it reduces, you should see the, the statement in here on the, how far down the math goes. It's heartbreaking that the math standards are way down. Reading is nothing. No more literature. They're going to teach people to read manuals, Levi, and, and, you know, you know...
Are you saying that's going to replace the PSSAs?
It's in there. It's in there. It's in there, Josie.
It's going to replace PSSA?
What do you mean? They can give PSSA or anything else they want. You got it.
What about the Keystone? Was that...
They can do anything they want with that stuff now that these standards are in. And it just keeps getting lower and lower and lower. I was absolutely sick. This is what the federal government has done to us.
One of the things we have to remember is as a local educational institution, the Common Core standards are your little, we bought them as breakfast sausage. But here at Southmoreland, we want to make some sausage patties and some bratwurst and some hot sausage. So the Common Core, to us, has to be the floor, okay? Not the ceiling. So, yeah, we need to meet those standards at a, at a very minimum. And we would certainly hope that our intent would be to exceed them. Not, not just to, to, to build ourselves to that level, but rather meet them and...
I, I, I'm sure you're going to do that, Jack. But what about the rest of the world we live in? I don't want to live in a world where people don't learn to read above a, a middle school level. And it goes on here to say, though, that the people who are not going to suffer from this are people whose kids are in private schools where they still get a good education. I'm not saying Southmoreland won't do it. But you don't live, you don't get born, go to school, get married, get a job, live and die in Southmoreland. We have to prepare our kids for a bigger world. And we have dumbed down these standards so badly. They, they reduced algebra, they took algebra out of middle school, put it in the ninth grade level now. They, they, I can read you all the things they don't teach in math anymore. They're all listed in here. I don't want to take your time. You can certainly get this. It's called Controlling Education from the Top. You can get it on the internet, I'm sure. That's where mine came from. But I, I did get a call from, as I said, I work with the Commonwealth Education Association out of Pittsburgh and get information from them. And they're just horrified. Nobody knew that this stuff had been slid in with our Pennsylvania standards. I'm thinking we were still waiting for it. It's here. It's here. And we can work as hard as we want to, but it's not going to change what happens in the rest of the nation. Our government now is going to control on a national level making sausage, Levi. Put our kids in and make sausage. I was sick about it. And it's exactly what Yang Shao was saying.
One, one other one here. We can't vote her up or down. At the Legislative Policy Council, four of us were, were at that meeting. And just to, just to say a word there. That's about, the, the group, about four, there were about four hundred people there from the five hundred school districts. They're representatives, including from the IU and, and VOTEC. So it is of the, the items on the platform. And, and so what we, as you recall, in regards to school personnel, we introduced or proposed having the, the item on there of supporting legislation in regards to work stoppage and strikes not being a part of the, the collective bargaining process. That, I, I thought it was a, a, just to, I, I gave you the report here. I thought it was a good discussion. And it was, it was, it got a two-thirds vote to get a hearing on it. So that's, that's the first step. So there was a, a good, a good discussion on that. And there, and I'm not going to go into the pros and cons that were, were given there. Maybe just kind of as a personal reflection, I think it was about in the mid-eighties. I remember I sat beside Joe Ekman. He was on the board at that time and we were, we were there. And, and I introduced this, and it, I think there were probably a dozen hands that went up in regards to being interested in even discussing it. So I, from, from that standpoint, I thought it was very good. It is not a part of the platform this year. What I put on here, it was a fifty-seven, forty-two percent vote. Not to have it on, but I thought it was a good discussion and the wisdom.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people.
The wisdom of the majority.
A lot of people went up and talked.
How's that?
A lot of people went up and commented at the microphone in regard to this.
Yeah, I think it was the most discussed item that was there that day.
And, you know, what a close vote, too, it was.
Yeah, yeah, so, very good.
Levi did a good job.
He did, yep.
Do we have anything else? Just a couple of items, picking back on what we might have to say. Just to remind everyone, everyone else, a Hersey, who have the report ready for next week of what you attended and anything you learned, just to have that right for the board during our board reports. Next week's meeting, I've had quite a few board members, including Mr. Paul Akoski, who's not here this evening, say that next week, since it was scheduled for the Powder Cup game, that a lot of people were wondering whether there'd be enough interest in moving our meeting from the eighth to the fifteenth. Some people are going to attend the Powder Cup game. And just wanted to get an idea from the board on that. A lot of people have kids playing or relatives playing or other people involved or just to support the fundraising that they're doing.
I can't make it on the fifteenth. Why can't we do it the day before?
We need a student expulsion here.
The day before?
I'm sorry, next one is the, I'm not speaking on the one before the fifteenth right now. No, Wednesday before the eighth.
It's Wednesday, yeah.
The seventh?
So that'll be the seventh. I didn't understand which Wednesday you're referring to.
Yeah, I was referring to that one. I'll be in Michigan on the fifteenth, but... I'll be in Michigan on the 15th, but I'm sure that you won't mind having a meeting without me.
Could we do it, I don't know, I just think it's such a big, such a big community fundraiser. It'd be nice to, for the board, one of, some of the board, you know, if it can, to be there for the kids. What about, how long you, when do you go to Michigan?
Well, 13, 14, 15.
13, 14.
I was counting on me being on the 8th.
Right, right. It's 13 on Monday.
No, I think I leave, it's like a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so I would be here Monday or Tuesday that week. It's... Is there some, is the 11th commandment says that we have to meet on Thursdays? I think we can meet on different days.
Can we do the 13 grid for a moment?
I could make that right.
Can you say, Mike? Can we do the 13 grid to have our second meeting, so next Thursday?
Is that enough time to advertise it, Mike?
So, next meeting will be November 13th, instead of the 8th. It's 7 o'clock here in the school cafeteria, and if no one else has anything else, I'd need to meet with Mr. Earl, Mrs. Popper, Mrs. Love, active this corner, before we have executive session. But we'll adjourn to executive session when we rush.
Can I say something before we do that? In view of the fact the administration's going to be pressed on this, I think all of us could accept our agendas on Monday. Would that be okay with the rest of the board? Because it's only, it's a short time for me, right?
Actually, it's longer.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. That gives you the extra time. I was thinking it's short.
That might help build a little bit of that time in this financial time.
So, we have a motion, strong, second?
We get them Friday.
Second, Mrs. Love, also favorably, I.
I.
All those opposed?
And we are adjourned to executive session for personnel.